To accept that in the meeting.
Hello.
Hello.
Call the meeting to order. Sorry, we're a couple of minutes late. Most of you can call the office.
Mr. Muller?
Here.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Beagle?
Here.
And Mr. Peterman?
Here.
Awesome. Pledge the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Entertain a motion for approving the minutes of the last meeting.
I'm sure approved.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
We'll call this, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beagle?
I've voted on that since I wasn't here.
And Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks. This is the time of the meeting for visitors and communication. If there's anybody that would like to address council on any topic, please step up to the podium and state your name and address and let us know what you'd like to chat about. Uh-oh. All except former council members are not eligible to step forward now. Just kidding, Tom. Thanks for being here. Okay, we'll move ahead to reports of officers. Fire Department monthly report. Chief Daly.
Thank you, Mayor Haas, and members of council. Really, I don't have anything to add to the monthly report that was mailed out in your packets for November. Obviously, I see some things that we did training-wise, but again, I'd be glad to field any questions that council, yourself, Mayor, or council may have for me in regard to either the monthly report or the fire department in general.
Anybody have any questions for the chief? I'll ask any of them.
There's, yeah, a citizen friend, I have one that's unrelated to this report.
Okay.
But somebody brought to my attention, you can tell me if it's, is or isn't accurate, that if they, if there's a life squad run and somebody requests a particular hospital, they say, "I want to go to Christ," or "I want to go to University," or whatever, that may or may not be, their wish may or may not be honored?
That's correct. Depending upon the patient's status.
Okay.
If the patient is a critical patient, they're going to go to the nearest appropriate, key word there being appropriate, facility to handle that, i.e., a cardiac patient is either probably going to go to either Christ or St. Elizabeth, Edgewood, keep wanting to say South, Edgewood, because they have the cath labs.
Okay.
And depending upon where we're at in town, closeness, they may request one of those, and that's great, but if they requested, let's say, you know, another hospital, we may not abide by that request because of their condition. If it's a, you know...
So, normal circumstances where somebody's not critical and life-threatening, you'll...
We try to abide by their request within reason, obviously, that the key hospitals are the seven on the hill and obviously the ones in northern Kentucky, so...
Okay.
You know, it's basically under that appropriate, that premise that we go in with the patient. Again, depending upon their condition, obviously, patient care is number one. Giving them appropriate patient care through us as well as the hospital is obviously what we're after.
Okay. Is there a variation in the fees depending on which hospital?
None whatsoever.
It's the same cost.
None whatsoever. It's the same fee.
Okay, thank you.
That's established by council.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Entertain a motion?
Move to receive and file.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We'll call this, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beagle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Excellent. Thanks, chief.
Thank you, Mayor Haas.
Police Department report. Chief Daly.
Thank you, Mayor Haas, and council members. Like Chief Daly, I really do not have anything new to pass on from what's already in the November monthly report. However, if there are any questions, I will try to answer them for you.
Anybody have questions?
Move to receive and file.
Does there a second?
Second.
We'll call this.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beagle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
All right, thanks, chief. City administrators report, Ron.
Okay, just a couple of things. The last meeting I mentioned that we'll probably have an update of the VA homes, monthly, I hope. So, I'd just like to provide a little bit of an update. There's not been a lot of movement, however, there's been a lot of conversation, and it's still centered around the idea of creating an escrow in order to do the remediation of the lead paint and the abatement of the asbestos. We have a draft of a new memorandum of agreement. We have the initial escrow terms that have been put into place. We also have the plan for abatement and remediation that has been brought forward by the developer and has been reviewed by the city's consultant. All that information is ready to be forwarded to the VA. We've met with the local VA people. We've had conversations with their office in Washington, so they are expecting that. We have a conference call with all the people on our end on Wednesday to finalize those documents. Jan is reviewing some of those documents as well. So, we're hopeful to put that in their hands before the end of the year, the end of the calendar year. Obviously, they'll have to review a lot of that. If those things fall into place and we can make a revised MOA, then we would be in position to sit down with the developer and start looking at the other issues related to cost. So, that's our plan. I'm not sure of the exact timeframe from the VA side, how long it'll take them to review new documents, but again, I can report that they seem motivated to continue this process, so that's good news.
That's very good.
So, that's where we are with the VA. Just a couple of other notes. The annual holiday walk was a great success. Somebody ordered great weather, so we had a great turnout. It's a nice community event. Thank all of our staff, people, the fire department, the police department, everybody that's involved, Eddie Buckley with the planning, the community, the businesses, I think everybody had a great time that night. It was well received. There's a lot of work that goes into it behind the scenes, but it's really nice when it plays out as well as it did this year, so... Just a side note, we're not going to have any snow this year, so we're going to save a lot of money on solving...
Excellent.
Well, maybe until the end of this year.
Do we need a motion?
Our capital improvement program, we are finishing our final cost for 2015 program and preparing a portion of the ordinance that you all will see at the January meeting. We had an initial meeting with staff to look at our capital program for next year, so we'll be asking the Public Works Committee of Council for a meeting at the end of January or early February to start to craft that next year's plan, so... And then today, I received a call from the water district on the tower in the back. They are scheduled with timing, looks like demolition will occur around February 1st on their tower. And then, obviously, the rebuild process, they're hoping to have that project done by early fall next year, so just a timeframe on that.
And they don't anticipate any changes in water service to the citizens' term?
Correct. Okay. Right. They'll transfer everything from other towers and should not interrupt certain...
Okay.
Excellent. That's all I have.
Ron, I beg to roll plan. Have you gotten a projection of the amount we expect here from the state of these?
I don't know that we've gone through a budget yet.
I can tell you, based on the, based on the projections that we got before the last budget that we put together, it was expected to be reduced a little bit, but not quite to the extent that we originally thought. There was, it was a decent reduction, but we thought at one point it was going to be, it was going to be six figures. I don't believe we were looking at that.
Okay, excellent. New business. We have a vacant council position.
Yeah. If I could, we did receive a letter from Adam Meyer resigning his position, and we probably need to read that into the record at this point.
This is a letter from Adam Meyer dated 12/1/2015 to Mayor Eric Haas, seeing the council members. Mayor Haas, fellow members of council, and people of Fort Thomas, this letter is to inform you that I am resigning my position as a member of the Fort Thomas City Council effective December 7th, 2015. I have accepted an offer of employment that would create a conflict of interest and/or an appearance of impropriety should I continue to hold this elected office. It has been my distinct pleasure to serve the people of Fort Thomas over the last 11 months. I cannot thank the people of Fort Thomas enough for giving me the opportunity to do so. I also thought that the city will remain in great hands with Mayor Haas, the remaining members of council, and professional and competent staff. Sincerely, Adam Meyer.
I need a motion received.
Move to receive and file.
Second. We'll call this, please.
Mr. Meyer? Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beagle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Sorry, I didn't want to...
Well, I, you know, I'm very excited for Adam. I mean, the position that he was offered, I guess Deputy Chief of Staff for the governor's office is...
In charge of policy.
In charge of policy is a huge, is a huge thing, and just, we wish him the best, and that's, that's great, and that opens up an opportunity for us to appoint a, another person to fill his unexpired term for the remainder of this year until January of 2017, I guess, so... And we have, do you want to go through any of that?
Yeah, sure. I kind of crafted a memo that you all will see in advance, and I'll just kind of go through that a little bit for anybody in attendance. It's, well, with the resignation of the position, that technically goes into effect at this meeting, the next regular meeting of council, which would be tonight, it's incumbent upon the council members to appoint a replacement. As the mayor referenced, that replacement would serve until the next election, so that position would be filled until January of 2017. The process for doing that is really, council has final say. You have a right and an ability to do that in a closed session where you can consider potential candidates. We have had significant input from individuals who have expressed interest. We've compiled all that information that you have. Those candidates could be discussed in a closed session. Council can get to the point of perhaps consensus on a candidate to fill the position, but any action has to take place in a public meeting, so you would need to reconvene a meeting if you went in closed session to take any type of formal action on naming a replacement. If you choose to do a process, a particular process, whether it's interviewing or creating criteria or any other method for making that choice, all that discussion would have to take place in a public meeting. So, council could choose to do that this evening prior to going closed session, or you could go to closed session and just discuss candidates that are available to you at this point. If you got in session and were not able to get consensus and then chose to do a process, you would have to reconvene in public and have a discussion on what that process would be. All that really leads to an action within 30 days from today's date. In the absence of a motion by this council within 30 days, that, that naming opportunity for that vacant position would be deferred to the governor. So, that's kind of the timeframe and the process for doing that. I think at this point, staff would recommend, since you have people that have come forward, that you consider at least these names in a closed session first. If you choose to, to go beyond that in some way to, to create a process for them, to be further about it, then reconvene your hearing tonight and then have that discussion. So, that's staff recommendation at this point.
Okay, sounds great. Well, at that point, then, let's move on to the other items on business when we get to the end of the meeting. Somebody can move to go into the exact session, we'll proceed from there. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the employee's health insurance plan. Yay. So much fun, health insurance.
Yes, so much fun. I guess I'll start with, you know, first, you know, we have, through our contractual agreements with our unions, we have an obligation, but further, we have a process that's worked in the past. So, there's an employee insurance committee that's part of that process, so I'd really like to commend all the union groups and all of our staff for being a part of that. We've met on three different occasions at length, reviewing a lot of information. Unfortunately, it's never good news, it seems, with, you know, an annual review of the insurance benefits that are available. And this year was no different. We've been with Humana. Our initial, and I'm referring to the committee report memo that was included in the packet, Humana's proposed renewal of the current plan was a 40 percent, 48 percent increase to carry the current plan. So, obviously, that was our starting point. This council approved up to a 15 percent increase for the cost of health insurance, recognizing kind of the recent trend, some of the issues out there with the Affordable Care Act and so forth. So, we started from that point. There was a lot of discussion. We worked with Carolyn Dean from Crawford Insurance, who has served the city remarkably well in the past and did so again this year. She did a lot of work with different providers. We were able to bring in different bids from other providers, KLC, we worked with KLC, Anthem Blue Cross, and I'm not reading it in front of me, help me out.
United Health.
United Health. I'm sorry. And they all made bids. Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield really was the most competitive, so we looked at all the options with them. And again, through the committee, we're able to come up with and attach, you'll see kind of the core plan that was recommended through the committee. There are always subtle changes in the plans, but to date, the city has always been able to offer a core plan that really had a 0 percent co-insurance, just was not affordable under any of the options that were there. So, you'll see that the, the first column in, in the listing, the Anthem Blue Access Option 23 is the core plan recommended. It does have a 30 percent co-insurance with the responsibility of employees. Again, there's other subtle changes. Some of the important things were, and always are, the deductibles, the annual out-of-pocket maximals. Some of those remain unchanged. We looked at packaging that with everything else that's offered in the benefit package, which includes the dental. Again, Anthem was able to bid a better bid than Humana. Coupling those sometimes creates percentages off of your overall cost for health insurance. And then, the other item was the vision coverage, and through the process of the insurance group, there was also an option for a buyout under the vision plan, which allows them to buy up in the plan that provides additional coverage, but there's an out-of-pocket cost that's deductible in the payroll for them to provide that plan for their family and so forth. We also offer, Anthem only allows two buyout options. Those become important for some of the employees that have an obvious health insurance need, and so they, it is beneficial for some to offer that buyout. There's co-insurance related to all those. Obviously, the buyouts affect deductibles and overall costs, so those are all provided in there as well under the Anthem plan. So, there is a change in the carrier. There is an overall increase in cost of about 12.5 percent, which is a far cry from the initial 48 percent that had us all kind of shell-shocked initially. But again, I'd like to commend the committee for their effort. The employees really stepped up with the idea of getting at this thing in total, but at this point, we feel like the change in carrier, the core plan that's recommended is what we would recommend to council to move forward with.
Good job. This stuff is tough to deal with.
Make one comment, if I could. I mean, I understand all, you know, this and that, I'm sure the best decision, but I'm still, and I brought this up before, I would hope down the road, we might entertain some local insurance brokers instead of going to argue for our insurance needs, because, I mean, it would be mutually beneficial to the city as well. I mean, it's a fairly big contract, and I think that we've got several brokers here that write for several of these same companies that might be given the opportunity.
You know, we could explore that possibility. I will say this, we have, not unlike other professional contracts, we have a longstanding relationship, and, you know, the...
Goodwill that's developed?
The goodwill that's developed, I think the, the institutional knowledge of our organization, what types of issues we've dealt with. There's a lot of interaction and ongoing, it's not just the bid process. Their representation is really important to our staff, and our, our union contract requires us to have this committee, and it would require us to, to deal with them as well in terms of changing them, and I think that there might be some resistance there because we've had great service, quite frankly, through the provider that we have now.
Has anybody looked at it from a revenue standpoint, as far as like, you know, what would come back to the city through the net profits of a broker being here and how that would...
I don't know that we've done that.
Balanced out.
I personally couldn't speak to that.
Okay.
I don't know, Joe. We could, we could certainly go back and look at that possibility.
I mean, could Mike...
Yeah, we could look at those aspects. I can, I can say this much, you know, from the city's standpoint, we're very happy with the service that's provided, and, and our people are really dependent on that type of service ongoing throughout the year, and that's really an important aspect of it. And I'm not saying somebody else couldn't do it, I'm just saying that that is already in place, and that, you know, I think the evaluation from financial interest standpoint would have to be scrutinized that way as well.
All right. We will entertain, is this motion now or is this later?
Yeah, you can go ahead and make a motion.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll call this, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beagle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Okay, the next item on the generation, on the, sorry. The next item is consideration of the city engineer professional service fee, the CT consultants.
You received a copy of the letter and the proposed rates. Those rates, and I did not put a comparison from last year, the rates are the same, the titles have changed. I think it was reported to last year that they've made a transition with CBS to CT consultants, and part of their process that this kind of an identification of how they classify their personnel, but essentially, the rates are unchanged from last year's rates. And again, we, we have the luxury of working with rate tweakers still as our primary person from CT, and staff would recommend that we maintain that professional contract with CT consultants at that rating that's been held from last year.
Entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve. Two seconds.
Is there a second? Any discussion? We'll call this, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beagle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Okay, we have one piece of old business, the targeted tax incentives. You provided some information on that, Ron.
Okay. We took the comments from the last Law, Labor, License Committee meeting and tried to incorporate, and I noted the draft on this one because this has been ongoing. So, we're draft 12/18/15 to be the one that's most current. We did make some of the suggested changes that took place in that committee meeting. We also looked into some of the issues related to relationships with the PVA. We asked the question with the school board with regard to their participation, and it was reported back from their, their legal counsel that that's not a possibility for them under this program. Under statute, they could not be a participant in that tax program. We think we have contained the thoughts of the committee, and one other item that was added at the back, it was telling the representation that has in the room, just to give an idea of what we have in the community, the number of single-family, two-family. This is all based of our, off of our waste collection numbers, so it should be, should be accurate.
Very accurate, yeah.
Except when you get up, you know, anything above a four-family, it's possible that they have dumpsters, and so this really is only representative of individual collection through empty, but it gives you a pretty good idea of the numbers of housing units that we have that potentially could be affected by this. So, at this point, you know, if there's other comments or input or information that the committee would like to see, we could compile that. It's really just for your review at this point. I think it's intended to go back to Law, Labor, License for further discussion, so if council would like to see any other additional information or anything incorporated in this draft ordinance, you know, if they just let us know, we'll put that together and schedule Law, Labor, and License to review it again.
I assume the county never participates in local moratoriums?
We've not had that discussion, but I'm not certain if it has an interest, but we could always ask them.
Yeah, I didn't know if there's any precedent, if it's ever been done.
Not that I'm aware of, right.
Is, the way that it reads, it's only for multifamily going to single, is that correct? It's not for debilitated or vacant properties?
That's correct.
When the CBD it is. I mean, if you're in the CBD, isn't, isn't it pretty much...
Well, the item A is for single-family, going from multifamily convert to single-family. The other one would be in commercial facilities, but not vacant structure.
Vacant or, or debilitated property like we were discussing?
Right.
If you're going to do some serious upgrades, it's, it's kind of on the same line, just taking a two, a multifamily into a single-family.
Right, and that was the one that was contrary? Is that right?
I'm sorry, at the committee meeting, there was some talk among the committee about a disincentive versus an incentive, and I think Ron probably attached the statute that provides you can increase their taxes as an incentive for them to either step up and improve the property or to sell the property. So, I didn't know which way the committee wanted to go, whether they wanted to do the disincentive versus the incentive.
But I think, Jeff, where you're going is the eligibility for participation in this is limited to these commercial properties and the multifamily properties only at this stage.
At this stage, unless you decide, and I didn't know which way the committee wanted to go.
And so, I, we're still talking, I guess, right?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could discuss that in committee.
Is this a mirror of the existing that the Renaissance has now? Is this mirror kind of what's already in existence?
The stuff that was in place before, I think, was more dated. I don't know that there's that, a continuum of those programs. Those were based off of grant opportunities, so that, that language is...
It's still published that it exists.
Right.
Yeah.
But I think those were based off of grant opportunities. I'm not sure that those still exist that way.
If we're going to do, the reason I ask, if we're going to do a true, you know, pretty the city type of campaign, there's more options or opportunity than just going from a multifamily or commercial. And I don't know if this is appropriate for here, if this is appropriate for the, for the committee meeting, but I'd certainly like to put my input in there, because there are a lot of houses that I think that some owners would take advantage of something like this if...
I don't think in particular, if I could add, when you added the stock, the housing stock, there's almost 5,000 single-family homes and only 300-some, if you're going from, even if you go up to five-family down to two-family.
Right.
If we're going to pretty the city, it probably shouldn't just be for 300 potential people, it should be for, if we can...
Those, those numbers are impressive.
It is impressive.
Yeah.
Nearly 5,000 single-family homes that couldn't take advantage of this at all.
Well, I mean, but the other side of it is, you know, people have been improving their homes, you know, all the time they just do that. I'm not sure that you need to incentivize that.
And maybe not, but it, it did, this just seems, seems quite narrow. When I see the hard numbers, I think it's even more narrow than I thought, and...
Well, I mean...
The state passes legislation, they have to do a fiscal and an tiering, a regulatory impact assessment and a tiering statement that I don't know that we do. I'd be interested to see, since you produced those numbers, could we do a, what would the financial impact be if, if we pass it as is?
Mm-hmm.
And only 300 people arguably could even take advantage of it, and if the school board's not going to participate, what are we, what are we talking about?
I think we, I think we could do some financial analysis, and again, I, the reason that it was on the agenda is, is we wanted to make sure that we were capturing the information that you all wanted before we put it in committee again. So, the incentive versus disincentive is one issue.
For discussion, sure.
For discussion, and we'll be more than happy to put some numbers together and, and to craft kind of both of those scenarios and what impact that might be if you decided to go in either direction with that.
Not to let the perfect be the enemy of good, maybe this is a great place to start. That'd be fine, but if we're gonna have an opportunity to just take some action and expand it, let's really examine that.
I think all this discussion is good for staff to be able to go back and do some more investigation before we take it back to committee, because I think there are some good things to discuss here. I think the number, when I saw the numbers, single family versus multifamily, I was kind of surprised. I thought it would be a much higher number of multifamily than it was. So that's, that's very interesting.
And is there a three-year lookback? Is that, did I read that correctly also, that people would qualify for these, if they would be an A or a B, they could potentially qualify three years back from the date that this is in place?
I'm not aware of that provision.
No, they can't renew, they, once they do it, then they can't apply again for three years.
So it's only, it's only moving forward from the, the time that this is in place, okay. And then who determines if the property qualifies or not? Is there a committee for that, a board?
There must be a board, right?
It'll be through an application process.
Yeah, they would file an application with the city.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a.
It would, it would just be reviewed under the criteria in the application process, there wouldn't be a board review.
Okay, good. Would someone like to, if there's no further discussion, would someone like to move to send us to, back to committee?
I'll refer it back to committee for further examination.
Do you wanna, that prior to your next council meeting or?
Depends on what you all.
You know, it doesn't make much difference. We didn't make January one, so we have till next January one to do it. Because that's when the assessments are done again, so, yeah. When we have some time to do this, I don't know what.
I think you could put it in place at any point, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if there's an urgency to do it.
Right.
At your next meeting. That just reminded me of another, well, I mean, I could save it for the committee meeting, but as far as the calendar goes, when it's like a four-year cycle that the county goes out and reassesses. And so how would our program intervene with what they already, you know, you know, I mean, you, you could have some overlap where their county's going out to reassess while somebody's moratorium has already been placed.
So that's when the assess, the reassessment really wouldn't have anything to do with it, it's just that our tax bill would be reflective of the old assessment until that time is out.
Right, the county would still.
The county and the school and everybody else would take the higher assessment. We would calculate on the lower assessment, which means there's, there's gonna be some work at the staff level to figure that, that out.
Yeah, so once, once they, once their application's approved, they would proceed with improvements, but at the point when, when they finalize it through our end, they would receive that tax deferment from that point forward for the time period.
So what would appear on the PVA might be the county's assessment, which could technically differ than we have.
I, I think for clarity purposes also, I don't know where you would include this, but if you could do a, like a per hundred thousand dollar impact of what it would actually, how would it actually affect the homeowner? Because I think that, I mean, one of the, one of the impressions that I was always under when we, you know, prior to being a part of council, is if you look at the tax bill and it's much higher than, say if you have one, owned a piece of property in Newport or Bellevue, well, that's, that's not really the city. Because we're middle of the road when it comes to city taxes, it's the, it's the additional stuff, it's the counties, the schools, et cetera, it's all that. So it's not gonna take, you're not putting your, your entire tax bill on hold. You're ta, you're only putting the city's portion of your entire tax bill on hold.
And it might be that you're gonna save twenty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents and it's not worth it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
What is our, what's, Joe, do you know the tax rate?
Tax rate, three dollars and ninety cents per thousand.
And that's out of eighteen thirty total? It's like eighteen thirty per thou, or per hundred thousand, or per thousand, I'm sorry, per thousand.
Three dollars?
So it's thirty-nine dollars for ten thousand of improvements, am I thinking of that the right way, or is it per? Thirty-nine for a hundred thousand of?
Thirty-nine for a hundred thousand.
For a hundred, so it's just thirty-nine dollars per hundred thousand dollars of improvement, so that's not really much money.
So it's really not worth it. We don't even need to have the committee meeting.
One of the tiering statements, but thanks, Roger.
I mean, seriously, thirty-nine dollars for a hundred thousand dollars improvement? This is, this is not gonna be an incentive for anybody to convert two-family back into one-family. But the information.
Unless we could get the county or somebody with a bigger piece of the pie to partner, but I, that's what I was wondering if there's any precedent for that. Well, the school tax is, is part of the, the biggest part of the tax, so. The county tax isn't very high either, and there's special districts.
It's kinda, I think, comparable to the city, so at least roughly double the incentive.
I think the con, the general conversation about this issue is still an important conversation. But it may be that this particular ordinance that we're looking at is really not gonna be an incentive for people to make a change to the properties, maybe there's some other things that we can do. Including the attached thing that says on the vacant properties, which isn't really part of this, but that you can charge a different tax rate for vacant properties that aren't, is that vacant structures that are not taken care of or any vacant structure? Or can you differentiate?
Oh, no, there are certain qualifications to get, to get into that.
Oh, okay, yeah, because it says neglect, lack of maintenance, okay.
I think the committee probably ought to meet again personally, because there's maybe things we could do beyond what was initially proposed, that like what we see happening in Bellevue and other cities where the city will pony up a little something for whatever the improvement is that the city desires, like Bellevue gives you five grand for a parking space that you create, you know. So I mean, there might be other discussion as to other incentives besides just the abatement on Fort Thomas's portion that could be productive.
Absolutely. Sure. We can certainly provide the information that was previously discussed, I'm not sure about that aspect of it. But would you like to see that prior to setting a committee meeting or would you prefer to set a committee meeting?
How about this idea, we just had this meeting on, you know, visioning. We could add it to the visioning process, sure.
That's what, that's kinda, I was thinking about, the bigger picture of this whole issue is, we wanna do something about this. We just created something and found out that somebody's gonna save thirty-nine dollars, it's not really gonna be incentive, so maybe we need to look at some of the other ideas.
So I, I take back my need for a committee meeting if we're gonna add it to the visioning process as just an incentive.
Yeah. Visioning process, folks, for you all out there, we had a committee meeting prior to this. We're kind of excited, we're starting a new visioning and planning process and council met first just to do some brainstorming. And we're gonna get public input in the future about it. It's been a while since we've done this because we've had so many great successes in the city, the center of town and midway and the parks, and we've done all this stuff and it's kinda like, wow, we did all this cool stuff, now what? Well, we decided we wanna start that process again. Because we, it's kind of a continuous improvement process. And so we were excited in the meeting earlier, we were just writing stuff on the board, just anything that came in our minds. So we're gonna, we're gonna get other people's input on this too, and staff's gonna look at some of these ideas and see what we can do to keep enhancing the wonderful city that, in which we live. So, so no action there.
So I'm making a motion to go into executive session, discuss the open council position.
Okay. Oh, do you wanna do finance reports first?
Oh, we have to do that, Jeff.
Yes, okay.
Report of disbursements November seventeenth through December twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen. General fund, two hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. Tower Park Fund, fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. Public Works KDOT Fund, three hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, sixteen thousand, four hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-three cents. CBD Revitalization, nine thousand, thirty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. Waste fees, one hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars and six cents. Police and Fire Pension Fund, one thousand, eight hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Total, eight hundred twenty thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-four cents. We, the undersigned members of the Finance Committee, recommend that warrants number three zero one one eight zero to three zero one three three six be approved and the Treasury be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Muller, chairperson, Mr. Peterman, member, Ms. Kelly, member.
I'll move to adjutant on the recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll call both, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beadle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Excellent, okay, Roger, you were saying?
Okay. You might as well go over to executive session, I have to go to council position.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll call both, please.
Mr. Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beadle?
Aye.
We shall return, you're welcome to stay around or you're, we, I don't know how long it'll be. We shall return.